John, are you on? John? John? He's on hold.
Okay, we are recording and streaming to YouTube.
Do we have somebody on hold waiting to be admitted?
Not in here.
No, we don't have them. John, are you recording? John? Hello? Are you recording?
Yeah, you're all right.
Okay, good. It's just. Yeah, he just. Nine two and nine. Uh, yeah, he has it. I signed up home. Uh, okay. Uh, here, you can give it to him if you want.
Not, I guess not for this meeting. So if they're working, I guess that's the way, the mics.
I guess that New York number, the nine two nine number is the best one. And then.
Nine two nine.
Two oh five. Six zero nine nine.
Zero nine nine.
And then the meeting ID right here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Seven two eight. Zero seven three.
Seven two eight.
Zero seven three. Two nine one eight.
Nine one.
Yep, and then he needs the passcode. Two five six three three four.
Passcode. Two five six. Five six three three four.
Yep. Okay. Thanks, James. Terry, do we have anybody waiting to be admitted?
No, there's nobody waiting.
Nobody waiting.
That's the number you're calling.
Yeah. I'm gonna call back there. As if he's having trouble with his computer, he can just dial in through audio. Oh, eight one seven. Eight six six two. Bob? Hi, it's Matt Mitchell. How are you? Okay, you want to just dial in by audio?
Hello?
Okay, do you need the number or do you have it?
Scott, can you hear me? It's Mayor Dave.
Hi, Mayor Dave.
Yeah, sorry about that technical difficulty. I guess I was using a previous code or something.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, it changes each time. Sorry about that. Um, all right, so Bob, do you have the meeting ID and passcode or do you need it? Oh, yeah, it's probably different. Okay, here, you want to jot this down because it went out yesterday morning, I believe. The meeting ID is seven two eight zero seven three two nine one eight. And the passcode's two five six three three four. No problem. We'll talk to you shortly. All right, thanks. Bye bye. Hi, Mayor. Thanks for your patience. We're slowly assembling, folks, here.
Okay, I thought you were waiting on me, so I was feeling bad, so I'm glad I'm not the only one.
Nah, nah, you're in good company. I think Mr. Paul's, uh, Justin. Mayor, if you can hang on another minute, Mr. Paul's dialing in because he's having computer issues. And then I think we'll be ready. It's a little complicated, but it works. Hello? Is that you, Mr. Paul?
Yep.
Okay, good. Well, we have the mayor and we have Mr. Paul by Zoom, and everybody else is in the house except for Mr. Bowers.
So great. Okay, thank you.
Up to you. How you want to?
I'm gonna call to order the Borough of Lawrenceville Borough Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, October twenty seventh. Stand in moment of silence and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
State of America. She's public for which stands one nation under God, visible, celebrated in justice for all.
Virginia, are you with us?
Yes.
You want to do the welcome?
Yes. Mayor Ravella?
I'm here on the phone.
Councilman Bowers? Councilwoman Drysbach?
Here.
Councilwoman Halaun?
Here.
Councilman Ted Parker?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
And Councilman Jaeger?
Here.
Okay, and our borough solicitor is here, Scott?
Yes, I am here. Thank you.
Okay, and our borough manager. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, there are no announcements for the night. No public comment. No approval minutes, no finance reports, no reports. We're gonna move right to mine, which is the action items for the mayor's attention.
Uh, hold up, uh, Mr. Parker, if I may. Scott Holbert, um, is there anyone in there for public comment or is that what you were saying that no one's there?
No one here.
No one.
Okay. There is, yeah, okay, that's fine then. Okay, you continue then. Please continue. Thank you.
Uh, nine C was a motion to adopt the twenty twenty one fee schedule, which resulted in a tie. Um, I'll defer to the mayor.
Okay, so it's, you're ready for me to call this? I guess no discussion?
Uh, we have to have possession. What it was just for, I think it's just for you. Uh, Scott, is, do we need discussion or is it just for the mayor's attention?
It's just for the mayor's attention.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Uh, I will vote in favor of that then.
Okay. And that motion is approved. And then, uh, the next motion for the mayor's attention was a motion to authorize the administration to install GPS tracking devices on all borough vehicles at initial, at an initial estimated cost of three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and an annual cost of seven thousand two hundred dollars and authorizing the borough manager to execute the necessary documents. Mayor?
Okay, um, I would like to make a comment. Was it more appropriate to do it after or before being this is a unique circumstance?
Uh, it's appropriate to do it before.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to say for the record then that I agree with our managers that the, that the GPS is not necessary and the, and that this cost is something I don't believe our borough can afford. Every police car is equipped with mobile police radio that is GPS tracked by the county. Every police officer has a portable radio on their person that is GPS tracked by the county. The Verizon wireless hotspot that connects to the mobile data terminal is also GPS tracked, goes through the cell towers. It's my understanding very soon, sometime in twenty twenty one, the county will be introducing a new mobile data terminal system that'll also be tracking the vehicles in, uh, GPS in real time. It's, the cost is approximately ten thousand dollars with the annual fee for this GPS system. And I'm sure our council members as well as the public know that our police department does currently has body cams. But what they may not know is Corporal Bill Smith recently used over fourteen thousand dollars to get new body cams that really the borough couldn't afford. And body cams are essential in today's world, and my point in raising up the body cams is we have a borough that's willing to entertain an idea of buying GPS that's not essential, and I believe there's other things more beneficial to our department as well as our community. So for those reasons, I'm gonna vote against purchasing the GPS.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So that motion fails. And, uh, item ten is other business. Do we have any other business?
Mr., you have another special meeting after this one?
Yes, uh, we move on to eleven, which is our officials. I'm going to announce that we're having a special meeting immediately after this at six PM to vote the twenty twenty one budget. Anybody else have anything?
A question. Will that be televised?
Yes, it's, we're on now.
Just for this. Thank you.
If I'm not voting, I won't be late. Thanks for the meeting.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, move to twelve, uh, to adjourn this meeting. Do you have a motion? All in favor?
Hi. Thanks, everybody. We have.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. Yep. We have about fifteen minutes before the budget meeting starts, so take a little break.
It's helping so.
Well, we can't, we can't successfully social distance.
Yeah, I'm good here. I'm right here.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna, it's being recorded, so you may wanna, you may wanna put, maybe try to put the mic down here.
Maybe, uh, like the hand.
Yeah.
I'll just, I can stay back here. Scott doesn't mind you sitting in his chair.
Yes, I'm gonna speak to it when we reconvene in the meeting. No, it's just kinda like a work session. Yeah, these are the ones, the wireless ones are the ones that are causing the feedback. One down there, but you're gonna hear this any time you're talking to it.
They translate it.
Oh, did Bob drop off? Oh, maybe he's working on getting his computer, uh,
Well, um, since it's just too morning, do you want me to move back from my seat? Can you guys come up here? Well, I'd like to be able to spread out there. I could.
I know, but I like to see and talk, but when you're down, it's more like, you know, like, well, it's, um,
yeah, you have a time to sound and. Hopefully those things will be fixed by tomorrow. Soon as the labor.
All right, Mr. Paul.
I made it.
Yeah. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks to Ted. Yeah, for some reason, my, my Outlook mailbox won't open. It's frozen. So.
So you missed all the secrets we emailed you yesterday.
Yeah, no, because, you know, whenever you send something on Outlook, I get it like coded on my regular mail. So I know something's there. I just can't read it. Very strange.
Yeah. So the meaning that you guys didn't do the GPS, like, that's first adjustment. I wouldn't adjust anything. Okay, council can reconsider it if they want.
Thirty-four. The first, you mean? Very high.
I'm going to prefer to, Scott, if one, if one, uh, meeting we have for the, you know, six one one mill, so it's four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars as a increase in taxes for twenty twenty-one. Um, and lastly, we get out, if these villages did not qualify, not to.
Uh, if the, you prefer the general fund specifically or are you talking about all the other?
All the other, but if we did not reach that, we, we want, no, what would not exist?
Well, that would be up to council to consider when the borough runs out of money. So for example, the library fund, just as a, for instance, if the library fund runs out of money, we will cease operations of the library. If the street lighting fund runs out of money, we will turn off the streetlights. As for the general fund, if the general fund runs out of money, then, you know, the municipal government will cease operations.
Do you want me to see?
No.
Thanks. So you'd be putting it, kind of month by month? Is that what's going on?
Well, yeah, I mean, just, just something off the menu. I kind of want to use it as something to answer, and somehow it should make it solid. To link you, so what is it that has happened? Here is the analysis, there is the rationale, where is the report about these dollars?
Okay, I think we discussed this in the finance committee meeting that there's no new heads in this budget. That the budget increases related largely to contractual obligations, health insurance, and other insurance costs. Which go up over a year. There's there really, this is a status quo budget. There's not a whole lot of anything new in here.
Um, but I guess I have some questions since anyone else can find it every time, but I do have some questions about some of the dollars that are projected. Um, so for instance, the total enforcement, we have what our year-to-date may not be able to last, but and it seems that. The enforcement between the UNO, the UCC, the fire marshal, it seems to be split up clearly. And how does it come up with that? It's been a tax year, the day, um, to have anything?
Well, we didn't. This used to be one line item and council requested, uh, it be divided. To give you a better idea of what was being spent in each category. And we divided what was in the one line item by the new categories.
Right, so you're you have 48,000. And three, three different categories, but yet you're the same actual spend is 59,000, 25,000, 38,000. I guess my question is, and the same thing is what happened with the legal and the engineering fees, that people have spent for those categories, whether they date or not. So I guess my question is, why would we do it that way rather than a pro rate percentage?
You mean prorate the percentage over the new categories versus?
You know, it's 50% of the total enforcement. Why would the budget not be presented kind of?
Yeah, I mean, it's the same dollar amount. Why would that matter? Overall, same account, same dollar amount. So if you're if you're just taking that same amount and reallocating it that way, you're not changing anything. You're still doing that at the end of it.
Yeah, I know.
I always look at the total account amounts because that's where we live, right? The total account amounts. If your if if your total account amounts are right, anywhere within that account, you could move, right? You could move monies if you're spending more here and less here. It's all in the same account. At the end of the day, that's where you want to balance at. So if that's where what we're going to sit here and do is try to figure out in the same account, what line items should get the same amount of money. It's kind of a waste of time, right? Because it's still going to be the same amount of money. We have two choices really. We could cut back services and personnel, or we could raise taxes. In the past, the prior council cut back services and headcount. And we were able to to level out the costs. Um, if we're not willing to do that, this council needs to raise taxes because there is contractual obligations that we're in that we need to take care of. Really, one into two. Okay.
Yeah, but I would say, like, before we start tracking our expenses for next year, the dollars should be, maybe for this year, but it should be, because we see. If we're going to hire a person, you should see how much of that is really UNO, basically, how much of that is zoning, which is. Same thing with legal fees and with the inherent cost, but everything is purely given, but that's not how it was spent, and that's not where our legislation. So that's my only point on it, if I'm honest, but it it is how some people want. So if we're spending more on grant applications, like our budget should should reflect that, not just between grant applications and grant projects and jobs. That's the main point here.
Good.
We're tracking the way you're really using our money.
But that's where we can make contact. So if we're saying that we don't want to spend that amount on grant applications next year, that's that's what we need to do here. Um, but for his purposes, for the for the proposed budget, um, I would have done it the same way. Because at the end of the day, each account is allocated that amount of money. How council determines how to spend it is another story. Um, so I agree with you there. As far as the tracking, I know I've gone to the battle with the tracking of it as well for a couple of years now. And I think we are starting to get better data, but I believe some of that's the new account assault where it's going to help resolve that, correct?
It will help immensely, but it's not fully implemented yet. But to your point, uh, this was a mid-year budget adjustment that we made at council's request to these, I believe, three budget categories. So that's why we did what we did and and spread it evenly among the new, uh, subgroups, basically. Well, we initiated the, uh, transition October 1st. It's probably going to run over several phases through the end of March.
So so then there's not much like, there's not much wiggle room there in any of this.
No, if there was wiggle room, we would have made adjustments for the present.
So then I guess we really have to discuss them.
That's the biggest driver of course, we're a people business.
So, um. Does anybody have any ideas or any thoughts on that? Okay, so I get hopes of them, I know. Um, so we have a finance director. So that's, well, actually, on the on the on the backwards. So, um, 3% increase of possible contractual obligations in the union. Uh, who is not under the, uh, obligation? So like, you would start or not?
Right, it would be the borough manager, the finance director, and the superintendent of public works.
Okay, so my recognition there is that management in a time when taxes are being raised, they know it's not good. So anybody have any thoughts on that?
I would remember talking to the.
Oh, excuse me, I'm the chief of police.
But the chief of police's contract says he gets parity with the officers, correct?
Correct, so does mine, but yes, but he's not considered management.
So he's the public works director and finance director.
Correct.
No, because his contract says he gets he gets parity to the to the chief. He gets a thousand dollars more than the chief police.
Then it would be.
No, it would be whatever the chief gets and and so it would be the 3%, I believe. Uh, because it would still, he's he's already paid it a thousand dollars more, so whatever the chief gets initially, it's a hundred dollars. Scott, we get that hundred dollars more as well. I'm not saying that's what the issue is.
Yeah, so if you did that, then we still, um, we would save a thousand to a hundred dollars on the.
No, because the borough manager already makes a thousand dollars more. Whatever the chief gets as a as an increase, because he's contracted to get parity to the officers, which is 3% I believe this year.
Yes.
Um, he would, the chief would get that that 3% and in default, Scott would get that 3%. Borough manager, 3% as well. It's contractual obligation.
Why should the contract say that you have to specify?
It does say that.
Isn't it specified by a thousand dollars more?
I don't know if it's specified a dollar amount or not.
I didn't, I did not see that.
Okay.
I don't recall.
So so. Long as the dollar will be cheap under the contract.
Assuming that's what the contract says, and that's what the contract says.
So so assuming what's in that, I'm right, I can't do it right now. I don't have any fun. So what does everyone think of not having an increase to management?
How much would that save us?
Well, that is, uh, both ten on who's being executed at this place, but the finance director is 2,300. And public works is 2,200, 2,500. And then there's another 3,000 for the borough manager, 3,000 for the chief, which we can't play, but.
2,200, 2,300, 300, so 4,500, okay? I'm not saying I'm I guess on something like that, but that's, I guess, sort of.
Yeah, so, um. You can give a little bit of, I mean, it's not going to change that, you know.
No.
Sort of. Um, the finance director, what's what's exactly, um, who's the role of the finance director? It doesn't seem like, um, perhaps we don't need that finance director at 75,000.
The duties and responsibilities for that position are spelled out in the job description.
So if we've eliminated it, what would happen? Someone that's been go on to you, which means that go on to another people in the office, how would?
Hmm, yeah, that you would have to come up with a plan on how you're going to handle that portfolio. I don't think any of the other department heads or myself are going to agree to take on all of that work.
I believe it also probably have to read into the charter or into the charter, correct?
There's nothing, and you have to do something. I mean, it works 50, 60 hours a week, right?
You know, how it's always be, um, instituted that. You need finance director, a different title, and you have part-time. I don't know, like, I do not relate that. Is anybody, is that on the table or?
Not for me. I'm against that. That would be not good for the office infrastructure at all. We're part of the office infrastructure to a point where we weren't getting positive penalties from the government, from the IRS and so forth. And, um, I think, uh, changing that and eliminating what we put in as protection for taxpayers not to pay those additional fees. I think this is a state and it keeps us on track and it it's actually working. I think it's a good idea to be a bad idea to. To just decimate the infrastructure of the office by moving that position.
And not to mention, I think it's a good point of controls that for a seven million dollar budget, you don't have just a department. We're dealing with the dollars. You also have basically an accounting finance director. Uh, seven million dollars money to move and go places and then find it again.
I think from an audit perspective, you take a dump too, because, um, uh, if it kept coming up that there was only one initialing on the on the deposits that I'm sure we fixed by now. Uh, but if you only have one option for somebody to do deposits, um, from an audit perspective, you're going to get hit every year.
Plus, keep in mind, we we are subjected to five audits a year. I mean, those audits go right to the work. And I think the past, uh, two or three years, we've had the cleanest of audits in recent memory.
Yeah, ask a question. The, I'd like to address Mike's question on the state regarding the penalties that were being paid. Um, I I agree that that was somewhat egregious. Um, and, um, and I'm not there for it for anyone, but, uh, in the past, the blame was put on someone that. That was not responsible for doing that. And we do have consistent findings now that are working out, I agree. But the treasure, I, oh, and my question for Mike, you said it was only one, uh, one signature by someone, please?
What did the audits from the past year, the, um, the recommendation to have multiple, um, initialing on the deposits?
And we only had one, was one person, or only one city?
It was only one initial. I believe it was they were doing it, Scott, correct if I'm wrong. You guys were doing a double check, but it just wasn't being initialed on the deposit.
Mm-hmm, I believe that's correct.
So so the signature wasn't there, but it wasn't like it wasn't being focused on.
Correct, and that's the past couple of years, yes.
Scott, on the finance director, is does he do most of the tracking and like work and paperwork on the the grants? The revenue, uh, they won't straighten the finances, uh, receipts?
No, he deals, in terms of grants, it would be, uh, post-project audit. And also the processing of payments. So if there's payments to be made, either the engineer or contractor or whoever, uh, regarding that project or contract, he will facilitate getting those payments made. That are required, and making sure we're getting reimbursed, uh, from the grant funding agency.
I want to do the next question. Do you deal with grant funding agencies to make sure that they have all the proper paperwork from them?
Uh, dealing with the grant funding agencies is either myself, the finance director, the borough engineer, or all the other.
And I'll just, I'll make another comment. When it comes to, um, the his, that specific salary, just like with his borough manager. That salary is broken up over all funds. This is why I say we have to worry about funds themselves. Um, because if you want to make an impact, you might not even be impacting a fund that needs the increase. So you could do something like that and not even get the benefit you're looking for. You're paying $3,000 after a lot of money. But it's it's a couple of dollars from this account, a couple of dollars from that account. So at the end of the day, you're not putting yourself in a position to really avoid the tax breaks. As opposed to somebody whose entire salary is in the general one. Um, you remove a salary like that, when you need four mills of an increase, when only a portion of his salary comes out of general fund, you're not going to have any impact to the general fund that you're hoping to.
Could you get, um, the salary?
Sure, yeah, we've provided the salary allocation breakdown previously. We can provide it for everybody.
I appreciate that. That was only one of my questions, because there's there's nowhere in the budget, even even on the financial that we get every month. Um, it it doesn't list anything next to administration and salary or the treasure. And if if 10,000 of those for, uh, like its salary is for the treasure, then it should be on the treasure line. Um, I I I think that would be a fairly easy fix. As I know, it's only one fortune of it, but.
Yeah.
I disagree, because do I have the treasure condition from what we brought on the finance director, so there's no need to budget or.
At least my understanding though, that that's part of this, when when he was appointed, there's a multiple threatening from wrong. But that probably could be, I'm sure, but what is what is Mike's actual, what is his title? I don't want to feel like he's not in the room, so I mean, he can answer, but.
It's it's finance director, treasurer, and compliance officer.
Exactly, so part of this is treasure, part of these.
Right, but where you're looking at treasure is what was previously a stipend paid to someone, uh, who did the job, um, on a part-time basis. This isn't a stipend, this is a salary full-time employee. So it would be more appropriate for whatever he's being paid or that position's being paid for their treasury services to come from a labor line. That's why it is the way it is.
So I'm just going to ask, I mean, you've had questions, but no sense.
Oh, we're used to it.
Yeah, that's, you know. Up here going forward for the rest of it, but, um, so is there anything that's handed down in the office, uh, the office personnel and the board of directors?
No, in fact, uh, I'm not recommending any reduction in personnel at this time. Nor would I. We've we've shed we shed three positions coming into the like the current budget. Uh, one of which was a probationary police officer position that was restored. Two were administration personnel, one was an office associate, one was in the public works department. So, uh, those positions haven't been restored, they were eliminated. And we have no intention of backfilling them. The budget doesn't call for it in the heads, but I'm not recommending personnel reductions in this budget.
So is it mandatory that we aren't have four, is that current, um, positions, or they give the field position to people?
If it has a dollar amount on the line, it has a head associated with it.
Even if there's a head there, like for instance, the four holes, it says two four holes. Um, is that is that fourth position, um, do we have to eliminate it or is it continued in these dollars?
You have two corpus, and those two positions are funded.
My question is, we, like, how so not to move any of that third quarter position?
Yeah. Well, actually.
By improving the budget of Chris Manning.
Great.
I would have had that same question. I know I've gone on, that was Manny Table 20.
Okay, so, um, I do have some questions, like, so the library, so they're only going to have one page. I'm sorry, one, no, I see new books, the 32,000 in purchase, but year-to-date, they only spent 15,000, and last year they only spent 13,000 books. Why is that relevant, though, of buying new books?
I'm not going to be able to answer that. I believe that there was just a new, um, a new order. Um, I think it was in our last bonus. Um, I think it was in our last bonus. In order to receive any safe funding, they must uh they must purchase at least twelve percent of the total budget on new books and equipment. So.
Yeah, the the library has a contractual obligation with the state as part of the funding it receives to operate from the state to spend X amount of money on new materials per year. And they will meet that obligation.
And there's nothing at the library?
No.
So it sounds like there's nothing.
There isn't. Well, it has been four years with no adjustment to the budget.
But I will say, as we pointed out, there were adjustments to the spending that allowed us to stay flat.
Yeah, but you can only do that so often.
There's saturations where we cannot spend.
Yep.
And that's why there's been issues coming.
Yes.
So like when I I'm digging through here, you're telling me I can find it?
I'm telling you, you can't find anything because we have been through this at our level. We have been through this with each department head. If there was something that we could in good conscience say is able to be cut, it would have been done before you saw this document.
So, if I may, um so let's talk about the sixteen month, the sixteen month budget. Yes, let just give a quick overview because I know it's important, but just so so everyone gets to hear it from you.
On on paper, you're adopting and we follow a twelve-month budget. But in reality, we have to survive fifteen, almost sixteen months on that twelve-month budget because we don't get property taxes coming in until April of the new year. So we have the cash flow and we're under Borough for an entire fiscal quarter based on the previous year's budget, also utilizing TAN fund and the capital reserve fund for cash flow purposes. I mentioned this in the finance committee, but it appears repeating because some of you may not know this. But this is the first year we have also had to utilize the capital reserve fund in addition to the TAN fund just to continue the Borough's operations through the first fiscal year. That had not been done previously. And we're using the TAN fund and the capital reserve fund earlier each year. And for a longer period of time, it's taking us to replenish it on an annual basis than ever before. So at that pace, this is what's prompting us to come to you with a request for a tax increase.
But this is only for the, because theoretically, once you get that that money that's sitting there, it it will work.
This cycles back. It goes back into the kitty. It's our savings for the next year, yes.
This is a special year that we don't have much.
Uh, not really. This is an ongoing problem because it's my view, it's been my view since I've been here. I voiced this to every council since I've been here, is the Borough lacks adequate cash savings. We don't have a sufficient rainy day fund. It's dangerous, it's irresponsible, and something needs to be done about it.
So then um, I know you've mentioned some tasks and some other people like to EIT do this question.
Well, I I think that gets floated and discussed almost every year, and almost every year it fizzles off into the mix.
Anybody with thoughts? No? Yeah? No?
Yeah, this is this is monkey, but I speak. On the ground, it's on top, it's always on top, it's always just that. Capital one spoke about. I really think the EIT needs to be explored. And the reason why, you do an EIT, you now tax everything apparently in the Borough. You don't technically, she's not working, and I'm working, I get taxed, she doesn't, that's not fair. Well, you're gonna say everybody gets taxed very, that's a lie. You're not getting taxed. I see. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe you have to go ahead. That's fine. So, everybody gets taxed equal. Okay? As compared, so you're now spreading to everybody. We are already paying two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to other municipalities that could come here. Those people work here, or work in other places, will live here. So you just do a tax increase. If you just do a real estate increase, you are now affecting just your home. Does that agree? Yeah, okay, so you're affecting a little part, and you're affecting your elderly, who are not bringing any more money in. As compared to if you have a fireplace out there, you have four people living in there, you have four adults. Each person's gonna be paying their EIT. So it spreads it out. And it it is a political issue that we're worrying about our voting. The people who vote the most are our elderly people. They are there every election at eight o'clock in the morning. Because they're gonna be able to not have to pay any more taxes this year. And perhaps if we get our financial house in order, then someday they will even look at, maybe start to reduce those home effects taxes. Because we'll bring in a million dollars as compared to this eight or nine mills that are being thrown out there, which brings in how much, Scott? What's eight or nine mill bringing? What's half a million dollars? Half a million dollars. Okay, you spread it out. All your department people will now have to contribute to our Borough.
That's assuming that they're that they're agile, that they've changed their address appropriately. And we see a lot of the dirty places in this department, so I I don't know that that's as accurate as I like. I agree with you to some to some extent. I just don't believe that it would have that the impact that 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 we would want it to have in that in that area.
Well, the money that we speak of came from new organizations that would be collecting money. And the other issue is.
We sent out the latest version earlier in the year, and it's in the Dropbox.
We did that in March, is that correct?
See, George from Congress.
Yeah, from last year. It's updated to the most current, but I'm trying to yield the word to the person who's speaking. Sorry.
And the last point is, ninety-five percent of our residents in Pennsylvania have an EIT. How can we really consider a vertical balance by? And we have no other consumers coming in besides the other state taxes. This isn't, uh this isn't like we're gonna be knowing people doing this. This is, you know, happening all over. All over, you know, Little Town's bringing in seventy million dollars. There's a lot of money coming in that could be come far in. We would have done this three years ago, like I suggested. We would not be sitting here tonight trying to cut salaries and um personnel and things like that. We wouldn't do that. We wouldn't sit there, we wouldn't be financially. We just won't be able to do what we want to do. Ottawa's not selfish, um but I guess this may not selfish, right? The way this will affect me in the EIT permitting versus, they need no tax increase. They need no tax increase in my house, maybe about a hundred and fifty hours, hundred and seventy. One percent is like hoping fifteen hundred. You're taking fifteen hundred hours out of my pocket. I'm not one of those people that pay that EIT. I don't pay that anymore. I work, I work a jerk, I work an ass. I don't pay you that.
I pay the EIT.
That's good, but if you.
Bring a half, bring a half percent EIT.
But if you move to Marlville, you're gonna pay.
Right.
So if you choose to live in Philly, you choose to pay.
Here's to stay there.
Yeah, here's gonna come here.
No one will come here.
You're right. I'm paying, I'm just saying, bring a half percent EIT, but you're gonna take care of your elderly people. Where you're okay hitting them again on more bills like that.
So, um, so so did, I I didn't look in the box, so like, there's a one percent, if you do half a percent, it could be point one percent?
Yeah.
Do we know what the dollar was?
I don't know if that was in that information that we submitted in the box from earlier in the year or not. I'm gonna have to look at it again.
Be good for their party.
Yeah, that information came from these local elections for, uh, we didn't.
I mean, you could do the math, we know one percent and you can have it, but you know.
Yeah, he doesn't have access to your Dropbox.
Oh, I mean, that's okay. This has been so. Does anybody remember what was this type of message?
Okay, half percent, I don't know. It's nice to hear a box and go under EIT, hundred, very large.
You can, there's a search feature.
There's a search feature.
In box?
Yep. How do I do that? Search, yep, put in EIT and hit search, issue bring it up. It's in the, I forget, it'll be called the folder.
Yeah, there's also, there's also a very specific part um to tell you who actually has it. I mean, why did Pennsylvania have to fuck down? Well.
Yeah, I believe that's it. It tells us at the bottom what the that's just from people who already live here that are already paying. Right, that's the people who already live here and are already paying in the EIT.
Does it say that it's average to that like, and half a cent, like a one degree, is the how it's done, the one is done, it's set apart. Some kind of different minutes, probably, some of the great. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to. That's what I said, because it's. Is anybody interested in like doing maybe with the you have to do much, but it's something that's been, it's not good to do tonight. Anybody interested in like looking at like number one, you're asking?
Are you just, are we thinking about a hybrid of tax increases? Like we just do, like can you do the tax increase and in the EIT? I I I'm asking because I don't know.
Yeah, you can.
Nathan. Well, you actually would have to.
It's gonna take a while. If 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 this council decides to do the EIT, it's not gonna be something that's ready for January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why we have the tax inclusion. And I'm just, I'm trying to get feel for what people can do in the EIT. Off the table.
It's not on the, um, it's not on my table, sure.
I'm open here, I'm considering.
You're considering, can I see?
Uh, I I you have to do something, so uh I mean, I don't get addressed, you know, Scott's point, I get it that uh they need, they need no increase is a lot cheaper than giving up a large portion of your paycheck. I get that. And it's not just the elderly, and I do understand each point, but you have, you know, you have families, families of four that are trying to juggle on fifty grand a year between the two of them, and and they're gonna have a a large chunk of, you know, their money, I think. And uh so I mean, I'm not crazy about, I have to pay, I mean, I'm willing to pay. Uh many people are willing to pay. Of course, you always wanna pay less, so you know, the lesser to evil, but I don't think we have, I don't think that we are in a position to be able to say that we're not going to do something, that we're not going to somehow raise these, you know, somehow, whether it's a you know, high-grade one or just, you know, just EIT, EIT.
So if you add fifty thousand um dollars, a point oh one percent, maybe to go on fifty dollars. Now, I don't know that that amounts to make a picture of that hundred thousand dollars, et cetera, et cetera. You could play around and not do a one percent, which may be five hundred dollars, which is a lot of money.
Well, even if you did a one percent, you may not get all of that because the school district, I believe, has the option to.
Yeah, that's always true. Whatever, whatever they, whatever they bring in, you will all be taxed other than the bills, and you can have the whole.
Oh, so it's a disentrench to that.
So we should get, when you said that the money would be available in January, that's true, and I'm sure we we immediately see the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, that's just a bit of money, and that's what we're being paid on this account. Don't talk to the board, just change that somehow, and the rest of it would, as it would be put up.
Assuming that we that we get the maximum that we're asking, that that we're able to ask, right? So uh uh under her plan of of taking point oh one percent.
That's not my plan.
Well, planning and discussion, whatever it is, um under under that philosophy, we'll call it, um you wouldn't get the two hundred and seventy-five thousand anyway, right? You get a small portion out. Yeah. Um but I, your point's taken. My point was only that if if that's how we're covering it, we're not gonna be able to. To your point again, we need to get some, we just take a lot of it from uh from full service.
Yeah, I mean, you don't get the real estate tax, so.
Yeah, but it could be a year from what I recall before you start seeing the full um uh implementation of it. I I believe that's, I remember.
It can take that long before you see the program, but the people who are already paying it would certainly be the ones that you would come out from first, yeah.
So technically, really, you you could probably save the same amount of money by the time the real estate taxes were, were mostly after the EIT, and then rest of the year, for the rest of the year. Know that be logical?
I can't speak to that.
I don't know, but based on what Keystone had told us, I I believe the answer was to take a full year, a full cycle before you you get the full amount. That's that was my understanding. Whether that's accurate or not, I don't know. I'm taking that word for it.
Uh, well, if if that is the case, I don't see us being in any better position next year than I would think that if you think this is gonna take a year to be implemented, we should use sooner than later.
Yeah, but I think if it's something council's seriously considering, it's worth flushing out. Yeah, we'll put a better date on it.
You have wish lists, I don't know. I I have one. I would like to see what the difference would be if we carved out that sixteen-month budget, made a fourteen-month budget this year, um added to what we would expect the increases to be in twenty twenty-two, and another and and the remainder of that sixteen months, to see what it would look like over two years in increases, if we kept up with the changes and phased the increase in taxes. You understand where I'm going?
Before you answer that, the question.
I I think doing it all in one year is actually too much. That's what that's what I'm saying. So let's break it up, let's look at it over two years and and see if we can do a fourteen-month budget this year and a sixteen-month budget the following year.
Okay, but the problem is you have to draft the twelve-month budget by December thirty, Curtis.
I understand.
Okay, alright.
But isn't the sixteen-month budget just somewhat, I know financially it's not, but it's a hypothetical.
Somewhat theoretical, yes.
But this is the sixteen-month budget, correct?
No, this is a twelve, this is a twelve-month budget on paper that we have to rely on to survive for fifteen to sixteen months.
So, but, okay, so then when I asked, at the, um, okay. Alright, so then I didn't get the answer, I was the the, to the question I was given um at the um at the um finance committee. I asked a question and gave you a different answer then. Um, maybe just, maybe I just wasn't clear on the question. Okay, never mind that. Never mind that. So you're saying that this doesn't include any of the additional that you're gonna need to get through next year?
Yeah.
I mean, and it has to be that.
No, you've never.
No, I don't think so.
You've never, that was my understanding for our conversation, that some of this included what you're gonna need to carry through until the until the next time you get taxation in twenty twenty-two.
Right, for cash flow purposes.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So that's in here, correct?
Well, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about budget, you're talking about two different issues. Okay.
But this budget is set up to be able But this budget is set up to be able to ma-manage what we, what we currently have and get us through until the twenty twenty-two taxes get in, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, so. Twenty twenty-two, so, we, we have to, for twenty twenty-one, we've got a budget. We've also got additional, you built in, stop me where I'm wrong.
I'm trying to follow it.
Okay, you built into this budget the ability to get through twenty twenty-one, right?
Yes.
And get to the twenty twenty-two tax.
Yes, because we anticipate expenses in the first quarter of.
Correct, so then my.
But those expenses are not itemized and included in this budget, because it's a separation between budget and cash flow. Do you understand?
So. So in your revenue budget, you're not showing any of that additional cash?
One additional.
That you're gonna need to carry through for cash flow?
No.
Okay, so then how, how are you proposing to do that with this budget?
Because your TAM fund and your cap reserve fund are part of this budget.
And they're part of every budget?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so. Now I get what you're saying, it's not like what you were saying before, but, alright, that's.
I apologize for any confusion.
That's, it was probably, I mean, I probably wasn't asking my question clearly, okay, I get it now.
I'm just gonna clarify for my presentation.
Go ahead.
This budget is for twelve months of operation.
Correct, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twelve months.
Yeah, and then the anticipation, which act-actually ends up being the tax anticipation is what we use along with the capital improvement, which we didn't do in the past days. But that's how you're gonna fill in your so-called other three to four months.
Correct, and we would be, right, we would reduce our dependency on it slightly so that it can sustain us for the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. Until April, when property taxes come in.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I understood, I wanted to.
Yep, and this is not new, this is the way the borough's budget has always been done, and this is not new to Marsburg. Everybody around us has the same issues. Right, and in fact, in a way, you're lucky that you have the TAM fund, because if you didn't, we'd be going for a tax anticipation note, which is a financing instrument from the bank, which we probably would not be able to get, because we're carrying a million dollars in debt already, so. It was close, but we got them replenished, I think it was in July, and we got both fully replenished. So, once property taxes came in, plus the other fortunate thing here is like ninety-eight percent of the people that pay property taxes here do so and take advantage of the discount period. So they all pay early, myself included, to get the discount, so fortunately, it's kind of trot loaded, because technically you have until the end of the year, so. We will, yes.
So Scott, how much did we actually use in the capital reserve fund? If I remember correctly, you pulled about seventy thousand dollars in capital reserves, but that was before you knew what would maybe.
Actually, we pulled all of the TAM fund, and we, well, all but maybe seven to ten thousand dollars, and we pulled almost all of the cap reserve fund except when we leave on a. What was it?
Eighteen and five in the capital.
So, yeah, we left five thousand dollars in capital reserve, so, I mean. We, we took them down to near zero.
But how much did we actually use there, or was that just because at another time when I spoke to you, when I saw a common capital reserve, you were worried about the effects of endemic COVID nineteen on finances? Or that the, the.
Yes.
Or minimal.
Yes, and, and actually, yes, there was some communication with council at that time as well, because we were not sure of how that was going to affect tax collections. Or the collection of bad debt through report numbers, so.
I guess what I'm saying is when you pulled out the TAM fund in capital expenses, how close to zero did it begin before the tax rate started going in?
Yeah, do you remember, because I don't, I mean, we can go back and look, but it was too close for comfort, I'll play that, I can't tell you an exact number off the top of my head.
And I have another question on that, too. With the funds here you have proposed, with your increases, how many of them was the TAM fund in, in proposing increasing that? That's what you really want to get at, is increasing the amount you have to do to your tax anticipation.
On behalf of the increase, the TAM fund, frankly, frankly, I think the TAM fund should be in the neighborhood of a million dollars. And we're barely at, what, four hundred thousand, just shy of four hundred thousand.
I would be, I would be fine with that, please, because three hundred's been that for probably, I don't know, twenty years.
Yeah, ever since I was at the county and we bought the annex from the borough, so.
So.
That would be even larger.
Yes.
Yes.
No, okay.
Sorry. So let me ask you, our personnel issue, is there anyone in the borough that is working overtime or getting comp time or comp dollars?
Everyone in the borough, a long timer, no, that works overtime. Comp time, I could not speak to off the top of my, well, actually. Someone asked me employees get comp time in lieu of overtime.
Is there. Can we have this, I don't know if this is possible, that no overtime for employees in twenty twenty-one, or is this.
We, we would not be able to get through a year without having overtime employees, virtually every department needs to utilize overtime. We don't have a deep bench of personnel here, so, yeah.
But like in corporate America, we're going to probably overtime and comp time.
Yeah, but corporate America doesn't come out by your streets or respond to emergencies.
Yeah. It's not an apples to apples comparison, but I understand where you're coming from. We always try to mitigate the need for overtime, but it's, it's not possible to eliminate it entirely. Comp time. Yeah, do any of your people get comp time? You guys don't get comp time, you just do overtime, right?
Is anyone utilizing comp time at this point?
Oh, yes, we use comp time regularly, it's contractual.
Okay, so we should talk about budgeting, so we are here on, on comp for those, but they're comping up. That's people, so you're using that sometimes, that's people on the street, who are working cheaply, that.
My office street?
Yes. So should we talk about, you know, having a chief's report and having the mayor do the chief's report so that people pay the comp time? Well, that's a big step to the ground.
I'm a major.
So.
It's really, it's really not an additional expense if he's using comp time, means if he's working three hours now, he'll just take it off in a different day, those three hours, and. It still ends up the same amount of money to tax pay.
Do we have that as reality, that's not.
That I, that I get.
That, 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 so, I believe that is an agenda I want to be pressed.
Sure.
Alright, so going. Okay, thank you, Scott, so, so looking at the fourth, information here, if you think first.
I guess you. I'm sorry, could you tell me the page, so I can follow?
Seven.
Okay, thanks.
So, so I was looking at like extra part time, year to date, fifty-four thousand, last year fifty thousand, and then you have a budget of a hundred and twenty-two thousand. That would seem like a big lead. I don't, I don't know these numbers, my, 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 you can add the, something along those lines.
Pretty much the same as the year before, but the only increases being the, I'm not getting increases, which is just three percent. And then you have your charges, which right now we have estimated around ten percent. The charges. Probably close to these, I think you might get a little bit of this, we will know that.
I'm talking about the extra part time, so we, so last year we'd be fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand. This year, we're budgeted a hundred and nine, and now we're a month from the next. Like that seems like it's also, that's double what we did last year.
Yeah, actually, we had reduced that line item last year to use it somewhere else within the police budget, and we're, we're. Proposing to put it back where it was at the one twenty-two, that's where it's always been.
Then you need to.
But to, to make this point, I'm sorry, I answered before I let go of the floor for a sec, most of the increase to the police budget is, of course. Hence contractual obligations.
I was just gonna say, the sixty-four thousand, that's only, you still have another quarter to go, so. I don't know how much more will be used of the.
Well, the budget is a hundred and nine.
For that, I mean, I don't, we might not get all the way up there, and maybe we'll get anywhere, I don't know.
Right, that's why I'm saying even at a hundred and nine, seventy-two, that's what we're going to do. So, like, the police officers' points, like, seven.
I have six, we have six among, no, no, no.
The police officers' time, same, same, last year was four thousand, I think, ten, seventeen, we're picking a flat. So, the last thing I wanted to talk about, and does anybody want to comment, Scott?
Dustin?
Oh, very good, my turn to page two twenty-one, it's page two thirty-one, revenues. The four, the four point eight seven two million. Mr. Mitchell. Is that, how, that's not including the four, the four mil increase in the general account, correct?
No.
Okay.
This is current levels.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
This includes the same six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the MMA rate increase.
It includes the same six fifty from the MMA, although we're projecting a slight overage to that fund.
Let me, let me go back to my question, though, Scott, because you got it under the column of estimated twenty twenty-one. So the four point eight is the estimated for next year, correct?
I'm sorry, where are you?
Page, three twenty-one, about page three twenty-one, total revenues.
Yep, gotcha.
Alright, that includes the increase in trash. And only includes. Leaves the revenue from real estate taxes actually six, six thousand dollars.
Yes.
But you're proposing to increase the taxes.
Correct.
So why wouldn't that four mil show in there?
Because if you look at the top sheet and tab two.
Yep, right here.
The numbers that are in gray that are not council approved, like under the general congress as military, you have thirty mils.
Okay, so you just left it at what's already approved.
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, okay, thank you.
Although you are correct that the sanitation budget number is correct based on the new contract.
Okay, that's what I was saying, thank you.
Wait, you know, when we got the second graph, we had the possible GPS system there and also the movie night.
Yes.
Obviously, the GPS, but if we're not doing that, then, that comes out, but the movie night is still in there.
It is.
I know it's very, again, it's trivial, but we have, we have money for that expense.
It's like eight thousand dollars, and the GPS is in there, as you mentioned, it'll be up to council whether you wish to reconsider that issue or not, or we can remove it.
Well, I think we should keep the movie night in there, because I think we should be doing stuff that's going to be involvement.
I agree.
So, we need to give these tips and pass tips if we don't, if we don't, the DCL. The session. Take out, leave it in.
We're gonna have, we'll have another tie here tonight. No, I, I just, I don't, especially after the, the mayor's explanation, that there's three different locations now, that it can be tracked as well as track, tracking from the county. Which would be the, the one that building jobs, and John.
Well, actually, would be all of your public works period, not just those two, yeah.
So, do you want to take it out then, or do you want to keep it in as a question?
I'll leave it as a question, I think you're probably going to find other places to back a few more of this question.
If we take that out, so, so in terms of the budget, you take out the salary increases for management, and. And that's not a lot of money, but.
Honestly, I wouldn't take out salary increases, to be honest, when you're talking about forty-five hundred dollars, it's, I mean, it's not even a tenth of a, of a mil. It's really, and, and what you're gonna do is you're gonna take the people that, that are, that are beyond those limitations. No, I mean, I.
Yeah, I understand.
I'd like to see it too, absolutely.
I would, I would look at the dollar amount of the raise, nothing, I mean, you know, but. But the, the amount of money that we, that we can save, I see on one hand, but it's, it's far against our management people. But I also see as the president saying, you know, what are those guys doing, forgetting the three percent raise? Like, on top, we're only affecting two people, we're not affecting two other people, and it's.
Yeah, that will, you need to look at it with a very, very.
It's three. It'd be a three figure.
And, and also, it's, you know, take a fear of the next year, it's definitely on top of another thing, so I, I get it, but. So I have a radical idea.
Before we say that radical idea, I have a question back on the, the expenses, the, the state aid tension.
Uh huh.
It's, we have it at ninety grand.
Yes.
Last year, I think we paid a hundred and three thousand.
Correct.
So, are we good with the ninety?
We are.
We are?
Yeah, the, the ninety is what we budget, we, last year and this year, we've gotten more. And what comes in from the state, of course, goes out to PMRS, so it's an exchange, and we then supplement whatever the difference is.
Anybody else have anything on the budget? What it is, I guess, what it is, other than. So we had the police study, and I know that the guy didn't want to speak to us. He's opposed to such a test.
Not yet.
I was looking at the, I read that, that study, and then one of the things that we had said in there is that we need to attack it. So, one of my ideas is to, um, create a detective position in the police department. And that would help us in that we take work away from patrolmen, who are the people out to patrol, and perhaps save some of the on-the-looker times or the other expenses that, um, full-size we have in the police offices. I think we would make our department a little more professional, I think it would add a lot to our dealing with the county, and I think that seems to be, um, something that was recommended to us, I think it's, I think we should consider.
I got an operation, uh, an operational question, I guess it should be chief. If you have, uh, say we have a detective, and say three of our officers have, uh, you know, three cases. Um, are the officers then no longer involved in those cases? I mean, it seems to them to be a mix, sometimes at work.
What we would have to do is, um, we'll be getting jobs they get, sign certain ones that are detective, or, or, we'll say investigator, or, or, backup. You know, make that a civil service position, and that's a, a burn position, um. More of an earn position.
You got, I'm sorry.
Earn.
Earn.
At twenty, or whatever you want to say, more, you got a civil service position, um. You can just assign jobs to the investigator, and then take them off the officer, so, unsolved job, you get the, you're sure you get unsolved jobs.
How many unsolved jobs do you, you have right now? But if, there's enough there that you just.
Actually, I love to have a good investigator, I just don't have enough for one, for a, that, the, right now, you don't have that person either. Um, we live in a great high, one person, we do, in fact, we'll have that person, but then we have to go through one, and the property, we want to do investigator. That's gonna have to be something that, which, I guess, aside from the mayor, I, I don't have that, I don't have that.
Are, are we paying overtime because our officers have to spend time doing that? Or do they just not, they don't get a chance to do that?
No, they're not, they're not, the officers aren't, they have enough time sufficiently in the day to look into jobs, and I hope, more serious jobs, I hope. But the less serious jobs, they carry on, and some jobs, right from the deck up, there's no shot to build, in fact. They're not looking at anything except not from door to, 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 to.
So, my own clarification, the, the, the suggestion would be, would be, um, stop me if I'm wrong, would be, um, escalating existing employee to that position, I think almost, I think what you were talking about is making it a promotion. Uh, oh, okay, so this would be.
Making a position.
Making it a position, but filling it internally, no?
Yes.
And then bringing somebody else in to backfill the control position. So, are you aware what that would cost us if we were to do that? In, in just the escalating cost of the new officer, not to mention the increase that you have to pay to promote somebody into that position?
Well, I cannot hear that, um, because when you backfill, I heard that, um, you have an officer out, and that'll provide, you. If that officer's alive, I don't know if he's business to do this, and, um, you know, not in fact, but, you said if I was in or the, or the, the, right?
I have one officer right now, one fourth of who is, um, one of the, working one, two, five, and six. So, when he gets better, coming back to work, over back out on the street, and at that point, I have one extra officer, which is a trouble officer, and decide to put him back in the trust group. Or, he can stay in the control, and I get another person off, and, 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 and that person.
Or, or we, we create a sergeant slash detective position, which is pretty service, and whether that's a depth, and we're still, but, so we're gonna keep the same amount of people, we're just shifting them out.
I don't think that's what he was.
I don't think on, I don't think you two are on the same page, or.
Well, yeah, if you said, uh, once, once your couple comes back, then, um, you can either, you're gonna have an extra officer. Does that, what's this, the apartment says, say, that what the officer becomes, you can cut.
Okay.
And you're still at the same, same level here.
Okay, well, I didn't say anything about the level, so.
No, that was my question.
Yeah, I, I was just, I was.
Make that an investigator, that way, you become short on the street, you can put them back in the uniform, and then on the street. You make them the detectives, and play them clothes, and you pretty well stuff them down, the detectives, and play them clothes.
Once, once, once it all becomes the detective, and playing clothes, you can come back in uniform, and put them on the street, on a park.
Each law doesn't allow it, but you want, if I want to just make a position, not a trash position, what if you were called active?
Is that, please, all about that or not?
Uh, I, I did make an investigator, and we dealt, and, 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 in that way, if you shorthand it, and say, uh, uh, Jill, whatever, and you're on the street.
Could that be, we're gonna do another job extension, let's say, we're, it's like, you, you go on the street, that.
It's your song.
You just balance, you work, you detect that with active uniform, and you have to have it, or not yet, then you're not allowed to have that. So, this, this kind of appears the same itself, uh, we would decide to make sure it's all correct. I'm, I'd love to have an investigator, if we go for it, if we can make sure I continually have two officers on the street, and if, we're not going to, the proper portion, then. Until you get more biased, you know, if you get up to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen officers, and investigator, the proper portion, and move that, and that, and that. Yeah, right now, you're, you're pretty well at a minimal land value.
Quick question, um, regarding, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you believe that when he said he had someone out, that that would actually, almost be like an extra person making a back, but my understanding is the person would get out, hide you down, the person.
Yeah.
No, I have, I have enough, the G P one, the three.
Right, but what about the, the person that's out, that's what my question is, he said someone's out right now?
No, it's, it's all limited to.
Limited to, oh, that's what I meant by that, I'm sorry.
It's all limited to, speaking of fact, he would be working day work. But, um, so I said, we're, well, at that point, well, we were probably the, the, the drops, so if we went in the direction of having an investigator, then I would pick the investigator, and swap people around, so there'd be two people on the street.
Okay.
I think you can, you can, yes. And you know, if the truck, the truck guy's gone, then it can go naturally.
And is there a capacity that you can get, Scott?
Investigator, it could, they could, it depends on how we write it up, we, we got to choose the chief.
I don't think that, I don't think I'm forgetting any of the trucking pushes, but. Really, no.
That's why I had, we saw that you said, um, Councilman Stieper talks about additional three, four, five officers, to really include the department of where you want to be.
Well, you don't have that kind of money. I'm not that I'm trying to add to the budget, but I had another question with regards to, we don't have, we're only, um, we're only planning, well, the budget, five thousand dollars for, for solicitors, for the police, and, uh, for the legal matters. And, uh, I would just like it to be a truer number, I mean, some of it's coming out of the other solicitation, solicitors, right? Because a lot of, there's a lot of cross solicitation going on.
Yeah, well, well, we're not budgeting true numbers on a lot of categories, because we can't afford it. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to balance the budget.
Really, it's a guessing game to, to what that's gonna be.
Yeah, it depends on the year, we can't predict what legal actions make up, what personnel actions make up, yeah.
The best, yeah, but, yeah.
It's just, and then, since it's cheap, so I'm gonna ask him, what is the technology, fifteen thousand technology line, technology?
Computers.
Well, I'm just asking, if you have a, something in mind, or?
I'm always continually upgrading our computers, the computers are, are huge, the, um, camera ball around town will always get upgraded, and we don't have those new cameras up, but everything, everything revolves around that knowledge.
Okay.
I mean.
I would like to have the cameras around town, but compared, I do it for you, do they be better?
Absolutely, if we have more, I mean, there's a lot of spots that, if we set off, and had it down here, we would put a tag, but, even, even, uh.
Now, there, there, there are more views for piecing together a case than actually seeing one, because that would probably get a little obvious, or we've got something there on the camera.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not sitting there a hundred percent on, right? But they are, you go back to it, and all the officers have access to all the cameras, and they're not going to go here. And they're able to look at, you know, something happening twelve o'clock, and the officer can report it, twelve thirty, they're looking back, right, like, twelve thirty, twelve o'clock.
And all those cameras that are consulting, and I'll see them in the cars, we're not, we're not.
You know, do they have to come back here to look at it?
Yeah.
Well, I, I've also been talking to, um, someone, um, about, uh, another carrier services, and, um, maybe we should eat that ten thousand in the budget. They thought that they could come and help us out to new carriers, or their minimum dollar amount. Um, I, I don't have any details, or any thoughts, yes, because I just started, um, fiction, um, about what it would be for us to have, but I, I really like moving to the detective, Um, about what it would be for us to have, but I, I really like to move into the detective. Um, slash investigator role, which I think that's been working for us. So, you know, I worked with you to figure that out in the budget and to see what that looks like. And if everybody agrees or doesn't agree, we can pick it out and then.
Just know that a hundred percent of that cost goes in your general fund and can't break it up over other, other funds. So you'd be, you'd be talking about pushing at least another mill into that, into that increase.
Yeah, I get that. But, I mean, is everyone okay if I do that? I don't, I'm not, I don't want to be that bad for the one team, the one team that I'm doing.
I personally wouldn't, I, I don't think it's the right time to do something like that when we're looking at this national increase.
I get that. Public safety is important.
It is.
I understand what Mike said. I mean, that's already pushing for thirty-four mils, which is going to get one more mil. As much as you can go for it, and then after that, then you're forced to either cut or do the EIT. You either really back the topic into a corner.
Plus, there's no guarantee the court will grant us what we're asking for.
Right. However, maybe having a, a, a new role that you want to try and.
I know they were pretty late in the past years when we left.
I've never known them to say it late in many years past. I don't know if things could be a little more stringent now, I'm not sure.
I feel, uh, I'm happy to give you maybe.
Sure.
Uh, the number of orders.
Yeah, yeah, you have the number, you, numbers you can just email.
I have a question.
That's you, whatever it is you think.
Chief, like, what, what is the, uh, the salary agreement for this?
What if we got the other, he changed his, he's off.
Oh, it is the same?
Yeah, you don't need to change, uh, so how is it that? You just have to choose the duties. That's why I say you make an investigator. They're, they're spotting.
If you're looking at other police departments, they have been a far greater department. Why would maybe to. I'm not sure. Like, um, I was thinking about other police departments, and that's far just plus, because it's hard to be.
Well, well, maybe not sergeant slash detective, you're super wide on that.
Right.
You also have six of them.
Yeah.
So, you're super wide with detectives. You have to have a detective to supervise.
Well, if you could be supervisor of, of someone.
If you want to relay the natural question, not that.
Two million?
It's be twenty percent. We need, um, sergeant life. And you have to make that a service model and you have to test to do that, and you get what you get. That's the one this ban which is perfect. If you get it, they may be grabbing as the investigator, as the temporary spot. The best person you think could investigate.
Something.
No. I think sergeant detective is not that. You're making detective or making investigator. You do a lot of work for that. We'd have to back up through all that, um, you know, even actually do that.
It would have to be negotiated.
One last question, I believe, I think it's my last or you can hit your. Um, we have two vocals. Is there, and maybe I missed it, is there thoughts of, of making another vocal? Okay, alright, just wanted to know.
I'm not, I'm not even too much with that. I like to, yeah, still.
I, I just didn't know where we stood because I know that there was, uh, no one, we had a three, the meeting today that we wanted to make sure that. You always had a focal available, you know, in fifty, fifty something, I think the number.
I'm losing you still in.
Yeah.
Live period.
Correct, so, okay.
Or non-credit, so, I'm ready to count my bill and see what job I have, how about four?
Okay, so we have to do this one.
I would, I would say you can wait for the, yeah, at all, no, I haven't run them.
Okay, any other thing?
Look. Look, up for the, uh, the old time, waiting for a day, planning we will go. And, the. We don't want to court, the court is canceled. Next week, or it's starting tomorrow, and the future next week, the board is a little half rate. Up there, and all, all everything is canceled. So, as this fire started to build up there, I'm gonna go. Push that, keep it off. It's not good.
Well, that's all I had.
Sure.
I don't think that was a product like that. So.
Well, it might be bad. It might be bad, but it's people that live. I know. I understand. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand it's a large issue, but. Average seems to come out to, to have some, in, in this department that we need.
So the part of mine is regarding hard just increase. Is we're going to wait to see, uh, the first about the EIT is.
Maybe, uh, we might as well go to that one, how long is that to? Amount two is total dollar now?
With, with the, with the current list we have, because you, you, you don't know who the unknowns are, right?
Whatever we know if it's, we have, with the five, one, one.
Get that, third party.
Correct.
They would be doing.
You know, when the people in that call, it's, it's, um, I, I don't think I need like a school for a party in America. Depending what members are in there, you could try to do that, and that would be enough. Yeah, and then, then, I mean, is it going to pause this, and you think you get to the third party?
No, no.
I just asked one question.
Well, then you just, I thought it was possible. I didn't want.
They want our business.
Okay.
So, I, I get that this isn't as easy as, um, I don't know, we saw on the ceiling plan, it's still, it's still more, uh, complex even than that. Um, but, I, I gotta, I gotta ask for, and if everybody else disagrees, that's fine. I gotta ask for a copy of, of a, of a, of a proposed budget that doesn't have anything that's. That takes out anything that's elastic. So, we have plans to, you know, move forward with parks, we have plans to do all these other things internally. I would like to see what the budget would look like with all of that elasticity stripped out. Uh, I, I'm not saying that that's where we go, but if I could see what that plan would look like. Then we could say, okay, if we are going to increase, where does that money go right now? I don't feel like that, I, I, I feel like we're, we're, we're posting a percent increase and. I don't see any benefit to the taxpayer for increasing their, their, their taxes from a service perspective.
Okay, it's not eight percent, it's eight.
I'm sorry, eight, eight mils.
It's about six and a half percent.
Mine's eight, but.
And if you minus out the GPS and you minus out the concerts in the park, there's your elasticity.
But there's also updates and, and, um, there's, um, upgrades to facilities and stuff like that in there. Like, less maintenance. Maintenance is a thing, right? And I know we have to do some of it, but how much, how much can we afford to do as opposed to what's in this budget?
Well, we're already doing the minimum possible. I don't know that we can really do less. So, I mean. Don't get me started on just the roof of this building alone and what's been going on with it lately. Um. If, if you can find elasticity, I'm happy to talk to you about it, but.
You know I will.
I know you will. I have no doubt.
All right, so I'll get together with you.
Well, like, some, but we didn't work on some of this next year, and we waited.
That's all grants.
That's all this.
Yep.
So is there anything like that, that is a, that to the borough that you can pause for a year?
Not really.
How about like street, like, are there some streets?
We can stop street paving, but that's liquid fuel as well, except what little bit comes from the street response.
That's what I'm asking you, is there anything like that that we pause for a year?
Yeah, that's pretty much what I just asked, and he's saying, no, I'll go through it with him and I'll see if I can find anything.
I can do it, I can. It's hard, I.
Yeah, that's what we do, yeah. You gotta spend that on streets anyway.
I, I think we should be able to cut back something in, in our, in our policy, in our services. I, I just think that, um, through often times, I know a lot of, a lot of it is grants. But, um, grants sometimes seem to be matched. In fact, I did have a poor person who did not make, well, not a lot of the budget, but. The other night, when we passed this two, the one, the, the traffic signal, will also be, uh, possibly side sidewalks. If you look, there, there's a, a, a match that, you know, a hundred million nine thousand dollars of it is, of our match to go do that. So I know that they always try to find another one to, you know, for another match, match, match.
Yes, but just so you're aware, that program, the, uh, where the grant matches waived. For both, for both of those.
I, I, I mean, my first goal is we stop looking at grants after we know the increase. I'm gonna be very committed to that.
Absolutely.
We have to keep, we have to keep looking. You know, we, we, we get the final decision on what we're going after, you know, what is the most prudent, and that would be.
I'm, I'm talking about the spending, I'm not really talking about the looking.
Well, I, I'm hoping we can start going out the, 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 the actual. You know, directly, for all initiated expenses, the whole listener and the.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that.
And, and know what you find out at some other fund, you know, like, from a grant or from, like, the listener and the. But if the output comes in, it comes out of there, their money. It will help hopefully be able to.
To break things down a little bit more.
Uh-huh, sort of that, and.
Probably we can overall head the year in front of whatever we need to do this year. People assume that's our engineering costs to the borough for that year, and it's not, it's not a true number for what, what's actually caused.
You know, we're, 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 we're not just breaking the engineering down in terms of. They got grants, we have, I mean, we have Gilmore with all the, the basically capital moving grants. So we have any, or any other grant, I mean, there's gotta be. Grants out there that are, that Gilmore's not gonna do, like. Any grants out there that. Our department can get, like, you could write or. Anyone that could.
They did fall in the cops' grant, not that one, you know.
Yeah, but I'm not, you know, you look at my budget, ninety-six percent personnel. I would use exactly what I have to put in that.
Right.
So, you would have to plan ahead, two or three years ahead, so it'll be my cameras are done, and I have to move to the, to the.
Okay, you already planned ahead two or three years to that, aren't you, or not?
I'm sorry.
You just planned ahead two or three years.
I'm sorry.
We're talking, I was asking about grants for the, for the police department, and he said he would have to plan ahead two or three years. Are we, is there any planning two or three years ahead?
No, there isn't.
I, I think if we are planning two years ahead, we're where we are.
Yeah, we, we struggle to plan next year. We're not looking at two or three years away. That's just not plausible right now.
Scott, you, you talk about grants, we kind of get some loose grants, the ones that we get automatically, with the bulletproof vest. All the guys that are wearing bulletproof vests this year, um, could you send that money back to your judge? Then I would back to them and say, we're benching, we're selling, stuff to them. We get, we have a grant for talent right now, tiny town now, I don't need a year from now. So, I would have had, if I did that, I would have hired a person to do the grant. Why wouldn't you do the grant? Because I'm going up against professionals, like, um, who just Little Town. Little Town hires a grant writer, and he gets his grants every time, and he's got to have a funny five thousand dollars, you know, to do that.
Millennium, yeah.
So, you know, I'm not a grant writer, I do the best I can, but you're in a competitive business when it comes to that. And the best person gets the money, even though Little Town doesn't need it, because they get all the money from the casinos.
In Cessna Place.
In Cessna Place.
And EMT.
So I would throw back to you, as being our leader of the community, why don't we invite the casino? Why does it stop at laws?
At the state law?
No, we, we were fine, and they said, no, we're not.
Because our leaders, Steve Sanisero and those guys, need to change that law so it comes out to here. And that would be.
They changed, we need to be just the town, the one year, and then we, um, we changed the legislative, I just had time to say.
And all it is.
Yeah.
And they went to the next community to sell. So it's time to go to the next community to sell.
The only time they can do that, we think that is if there's, if, if, you know, the area, and then they can actually watch.
If they change the law, thirty-six percent.
But they changed it by tomorrow, and it's, it's, it's.
So you can never change the law.
You do not, no.
Or you can do the person down there who wants to leave it that way, because if you look, that voting booth is all about where that line is. It only affects one state senator. So I can't believe the rest of the state senators can't jump in this game and change that one. Thirty-six percent of the, of the people who go to this casino come out of.
Come over our bridges.
And go to our bridges. We're affected by that. If our senators step up, we should be able to get some money. How is Langmont getting money? How is it going now?
And you though, you'll go get money.
You'll go get money. They only have to hop on the street ninety percent of the time. I think they're connected to the next town over, but they need to do it, they need to bring it out for.
And Bristle, Bristle got money. They got two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Five years ago. Um, it, it just, and, and we're not even giving, giving them.
Right, the borough or the township?
The borough.
Really?
Yeah.
They both go, the borough and the township.
And we have, I don't know if they filed the last couple of years, but in prior years, yes, we were right, because it goes out again, we write a letter.
These far, out of their budget, five years. Imagine if we could do that. That's where I say we need to speak to our state senator, be able to move that ring around. No, don't make sense. When I spoke to the state, the state senator from down there, he was very mean, but I had those numbers.
We're still, I mean, I mean, that's, well, that's what we need, that's.
I've already talked to Steve and, um, Steve, that the legislative structure cannot be opened up until the gaming commission does something to change the. Even if that doesn't, then they just, they can start working on a legislative.
Gaming commissions are a powerful commission.
Yeah, so until they ban for capacity, make a change, or open a new casino, they're going to change. I just have a conversation.
I had a conversation with the city, but I was thinking about if they change the rules.
When are the changes that, that are needed?
I feel they change, when they change, they.
They showed the people that, that, that.
They appoint the gaming commission, so they can change the rules if they want. Because like they said, we want to leave the casinos up until bottom lot, well, okay, and there, and certain rules they can change. All these rules are changeable, if they want to. As the, there's a big money pot down there.
We're gonna keep them to, what is the number?
Yeah, I think.
Wanted to see what number it was.
I think we should do a couple of experiments where they could do, well, I don't know what we could get from them, but at some point, we could do our own math, but whether it could be one percent and the dollar that is. Point one percent, one percent, that, you know.
There's no, there's no way to S D, they're just on. There's no way for them to come in, anything they want, whoever's not currently hanging there.
No, because they, they have no idea. Who's W two or who isn't, um.
But they could tell us if we send it, so, we have eighty-nine hundred residents, they could tell us if we send it, if we're ready.
They may, we will ask them.
Yeah, because then you could, I mean, you've got, you've got to figure twenty-two percent are kids, um, twenty-two, twenty-five percent are seniors. So, fifty percent of our, so you're talking about five thousand people that are, are including employees, you know, what percentage? I guess something in the, out of working that should be working, you know, maybe given.
Yep, we'll see what their capabilities are.
So, u- using the, the one that we referenced just in this meeting, the one that was read surface to us. Um, what was it, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, I, I shut it down, so now.
That's what they currently.
That's what they currently pay, and that's all the people we know. Right.
I, yes, I believe the chart that was made available to you is people who live in the borough who are already paying the EIT to another jurisdiction.
I think so.
And the, the percentage in those jurisdictions is prob- probably varies. This is the dollar amount what was on that report, based on what they're already collecting.
Okay, because every time.
Can we get it at, at the percentage, like, fifty people are paying one percent, fifty people maybe have, then, you down, people are paying.
Yeah, we'll see if they can drill down on that, that deeply, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I would be interested. You, you, and you can actually see the surround, you, you just, just, uh, just Google search it right up, about EITs and BACs, and I'll tell you.
For property owners? Yes, it's about that amount, yes.
All right, we're putting on a year. Would you like to do something back?
Scott, if I could, the wage dash sheet, like, draw your attention to that.
Sure.
Um, total increase for, for wages, all wages, some of this will be broken up into other, other accounts. It's forty-three thousand one hundred eighteen dollars, that's contractual.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The wage dash sheet, this is where we, where we say that we have our contractual obligations, right? And we have other contractual obligations, obviously, uh, uh, in there as well.
Yeah, because this, this shows salaries only.
Right. Um, so forty-three thousand, uh, one eighteen is your total increase for all salaries per lot, correct?
Correct.
All right. Um, then, then, I, I gotta stand behind, I believe that there's stuff we can strip out. Uh, because I get that we're gonna have in, increases all over the place, but if, but if the salary increases are less than ten percent of our overall increase. There's other things we're not, we're not considering that, that we need to really take a look at and make, make an honest decisions whether or not we need to do it or not. Um, because we're talking about our contractual salary increases being less than ten percent of our overall increase that we're, that we're proposing.
Right, and you have health insurance and your other insurance.
I get that, and, and say health insurance is, is, increases on its own by ten percent, right? Um, you're gonna have some increases, but if the overall salaries are only, are less than ten percent of your total increase, there's something else that, that, that I'm, I'm not getting. Um, as to where, where the, where the expenses that we, that we're talking about have no elasticity. Because that's where your lack of elasticity is gonna be, is in the payroll, because you need, you need this manpower, you're telling, I, I, I don't even agree with that at this point, because we've already made those cutbacks. Um, so, I, I, I do, and, and this isn't gonna be the meeting for, because I wanna, I wanna get in, in, in some areas, and we can come back and talk about it for the next meeting. Um, but I really believe there's some, there's some areas that we need to look at very closely for this year. Um, and, and see what we can do about pushing them off, uh, for this year, because I, I think the increase that we're proposing here is just, it's, it's exor- it's absorbent. Uh, a- and I get, I, I get the, the argument that school does it, and nobody, nobody dies, I get all that, but I'm just, I'm not personally comfortable with it.
Like, what if, have you seen, it's like, if you've gone over it line by line, what have you seen that you think you could keep?
Well, that's the thing, there, there's, there's increases, I can go line by line, but I'm not gonna sit here for four hours.
Well, maybe not as a group, but I'm just wanting you to go over it yourself.
I have, I have, and there are, there are increases, but I don't know if they're, if they're increases that are, um, needed or not. That's where they need to sit down and, and try to figure out, and just get, wrap my head around, is really what, what I'm saying, because I can't wrap my head around this right now. Um, and, in the past, I have sat down with Scott, and he's, he's been able to clarify stuff for me, so. If, if, if I can wrap my head around it, I'll feel different about it, but for, for my vote, I need, I need more information, because I just can't wrap my head around how. You know, the whole conversation is always, and we hear from the borough, we hear from school, that, you know, salaries, we, we have contractual obligations to salaries, and that equates to forty-three thousand. Of the nearly five hundred thousand dollars we're talking about. I'm just not comfortable with that. Uh, if, if that's the case, that's fine, and I get it, insurance goes up, I get all that stuff, but I need to get a better understanding. And, and a, a, a more solid belief that the things in here are absolutely something we have to have, as opposed to, um.
Well, I think some of it also, uh, falls on the revenues. Uh, you can see a lot of revenue decreases.
There are some.
And, and, um, you know, that, that's at least the melt on, on the number of, of the decreases, so, um.
Yeah, while we're on the subject of revenue, if I can add that you're gonna continue to see declining, uh, collections.
Yes.
For prior bad debt.
And I think you're a little high this year for that.
We're, we are, and you, you're also going to see cable franchise fees from both providers decline over the years. Because upcoming generations are simply not using that technology anymore. And we're probably too reliant on that, and I think that's, what, two hundred grand a year, and then we get just from the. That's.
Yeah, no, I'd be.
Yeah, so that's, those are things that are going to go away over time. It may not be in twenty twenty-one, but it's gonna happen.
Got you. But, uh, it, just to, just to point out, though, Nancy, to, to your point, however, um, the, the, last year's, um, revenue. Uh, looking at, uh, one point, uh, four point one million, um, looking at, uh, budgeting this, this year, four point eight million. A portion of that is going to be your increase in sanitation. Um, that's just the general fund I'm looking at, not the other funds in total. Um, so, again, I, I just need, because I know when, when it's mentioned about, uh, adding to the, to the different funds and increasing those different funds, some of that's gonna be payroll, right? And it's understandably that where it's going and coming from. Um, I'm just having a hard time saying, okay, well, we're talking, and let me be, be specific here, and give you an example of why I'm concerned. I look at the.
Fond to go.
The rec fund, and say that we're, we're substantially increasing that, we're looking to substantially increase that, was that a hundred and sixty thousand? We'll get to one. The recreation fund, um, you're looking at, um, adding to it fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
That would be the entire amount we would need to cover salary increases. So, when, when I look at it that way, I'm going, okay, well, if that's the case, we're raising it because we need to cover the salaries.
Keep, keep in mind that some of that is also your property maintenance.
I do, I do, and that's why I wanna go over with you, because I wanna understand why it's, why it's increasing that substantially year over year, and I get what you have. Uh, Patriots Park, you know, that's just mowing, right, and that's a.
Yeah, ke- yeah, keep in mind that, you know, the borough has added properties, uh, Patriots Park was added. And when Morrisville ambulance squad imploded and the borough took over the EMS building. We took over the maintenance responsibilities for those two facilities without any additional appropriation of funding, so. Those things add up.
Understood, and that's what I wanna go through with you, because that's what, that's what's not adding up to me.
So what is this debt fund, um, consisting of twenty-five thousand dollars, and we were having a game last year? Well, we have a great thirty six thousand. And the budget is thirty six thousand, eight fifteen. Worth the bottom, seven twenty five. I saw a couple of those things, like there's something for the fires for forty thousand.
Well, the fire fund is entirely based on millage. They get the entirety of the millage dedicated for them.
It's just the building now, yeah.
I don't see like year to date numbers for any goals in those of the funding. So this one's the rec fund, ninety twenty six, four oh six, twenty four six.
Count of five, four, five, four.
Yep, I got it.
Is that?
You have that handy, I don't remember what we had in there.
Well, you should always have a contingency, what are you asking, where it's coming from or? It has an expense. And so let's.
You remember. That's been the same amount for the last three years, okay.
And that's. I'm gonna do something like if it says last year.
We need to use it. There are unforeseen items that are not budgeted.
Yeah, last year shows what was spent, so if nothing was spent on it, there'd be nothing in the last year column.
So the contingency is the gap, is that is that thing that we could reduce all?
Um sure.
Especially if we didn't use it last year.
Uh huh.
So that's the kind of elasticity that I was asking, like about. What is gonna be reduced for it, something like that can actually be reduced.
Maybe reduce, but I wouldn't take it, I wouldn't take it all out. I just think that, again, this this budget is is your best guess, and if you really strip it, it'd be butchered. But, you know, point six, if we didn't need point six, maybe make that fifteen.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, if you if you want us to carry no contingencies or lower contingencies than what we already have, we can reduce them.
Well, to my point, can we give us for a summary, like, shall we resist and change this, potentially do it, because we know things that we can't change? And then like, is it just a contingency? What is the?
Well, th- this isn't what Scott did for contingencies, this contingency line has been here since before I came here.
Yeah, but what is what is the sum of all of them, because I saw contingencies in all of the different parts.
Yeah, and some are used, most actually, and some are not.
Yes, because once there are not, we can help with that some four years.
Sure.
But if you think like that, because we know that to my point, we can't change forty two thousand and two, what is the chance of these, what are the differences that we can't change, and those things that we could.
Okay. I can tell you what the contingencies are. I'm not recommending that they be changed, but I can give you a list of them, yes.
I'm with you on that.
Sure.
I I'd also like to point out that the rec fund is also, there's no restriction on that, with that fund. So if you wanted to, you know, build a bit of trouble, I I just, I believe in the contingencies. Now, first off, in two mils of worth, uh maybe I don't believe in two mils, but let's see.
It's nice to have a community, I'd like to have, you know, ten thousand dollars in the city, and then we can time that. I know the performance that makes the season, you know, and we're not gonna stop.
You mentioned the ambulance building.
Mm hmm.
Um as far as the physical building itself, are there things that we uh have to fix or any major improvement that needs to take place this week, or this month, this year, I'm sorry, next year?
That's a lot of questions. Can you, can you give me one at a time?
I'm so sorry, next year.
Yes, no, there's none for seeing next year, we did just recently have to replace the electric hot water heater.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, you have a lot of work to do.
Always.
Uh huh.
All right, so I don't have anything else to do.
Um I have a question about this format. Is it possible to get, we're looking at this, you give us the amount that was spent last year. Um is it possible to add in the amount that was budgeted last year and also a column that shows the difference between you proposed budget this year and last year's budget? I mean, essentially, that's what gonna drive what we look at is.
Thank you, Justin.
Once I have the largest difference, and that definitely is the start.
Thank you, I'd like, I'd like to call across to be. Have more.
Yeah, I I assumed that when I said last year, that's what the budget was last year, I didn't know that. Dollars we're taking out, we're doing at least.
If I could get an Excel or copy emailed to me, that would be super, super helpful.
Sure.
Me too.
Sure.
Um.
We will send the Excel document to everyone like we did last year.
Yep.
You guys are a little ahead of us, because this is all the kinds of stuff that we usually do after you adopt the proposed budget. Because when you adopt the proposed budget, it also publishes it and makes it available for public comment. These are the things that usually happen between adoption of a proposed budget and then final. But we'll get on it.
Also, I'd like to have a request that if you send it, in whatever format you send it out, could you please just uh date it and say you didn't, and the date, and revise them.
No problem.
Yeah, um, do you want to maybe, like, just to, or I should say motion to adjourn?
No, you don't need to.
So you want to talk about this?
Oh, yes, just FYI, I handed all of you a booklet this evening, it's a draft of the updated comprehensive plan that the planning commission has been working on with the Bucks County Planning Commission. It is out for public comment and review, and uh it will likely be made available to council for adoption at your December meeting.
Is it on our website?
It is. You may, it's your copy.
Thanks, sir.
That's yours. Anything else for me tonight?
Yep.
Circle back around for more.
Yeah.
Go over the adjustments.
Yeah.
All right, do you want me to make a point on your schedule?
Yes, please.
Would you like it mid afternoonish?
Whatever.